Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. All board members are present and accounted for as is met as their student rep. I would ask us to stand up if you're inclined, face the flag, and we'll take the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start out with the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes, deletions, additions that anybody would like to put forth? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Outset. Jerry made it. Kurt?
Yep.
Do you second it?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried. The approval of the minutes from the preceding two board meetings, have you had a chance to review them? If not, just take a minute to do so. Anything that should be changed, bring it to our attention.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Josh. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Scheduled presenters. Enrique, speaking to the 1516 Tech Initiative Plan, which you have an attachment for. Enrique?
Yes.
Presentation here.
Okay. This is a few highlights from the last two years. Two thousand, actually last year, 2013, 2015, I'm a little nervous. I just wanted to go off a few, a brief recap of what we've done with the infrastructure. We've added 83 new wireless access points to cover classrooms in the whole district. Fifty-eight new network switches, including new core switches and upgrades to 10 gig backbone. Fifty-two new Dell tablets deployed, forty-eight new MacBook Air laptops deployed, ninety refurbished computers deployed, five hundred staff and students computers. Upgraded the image, refreshed, and migrated from Windows XP. One hundred and ninety new Dell tablets deployed, one hundred and ninety new iPad deployed. Eighty-nine new repurposed security cameras were installed along with new access control systems. All local servers were replaced and moved to re-tagged. Internet access upgraded from 60 mags up to 1,000 mags. Overall, every computer on the network device was redone, reconfigured, with only three exceptions. The number of computers and laptops, tablets managed by the district has increased from 650 to 1,040 devices. From my understanding, past few years, there's been a lot of downtime in the internet. This year, from my understanding, there's only been one, and that's because Aaron was rebooting a switch. So, no downtime, infrastructure works great, and I don't know, I guess it helps to appreciate what we have in place. My old school district, we'd have five access points, that's it. For future notes, adding roughly 465 schooling devices per year until we reach one-on-one And to the school reaches one-on-one. Lab reductions could start as early as next year.
Enrique, can I stop you there? Could you explain that a little bit? I want to make sure the board understands why we would be looking at lab reductions.
Well, lab reductions, well, we won't need labs when we have a device on with every student. This will eliminate hardware. These are old machines for testing especially.
Love when tech goes out on the tech guy.
But you gotta go back. You gotta go back.
For testing, we won't need labs anymore. For experiments, we won't need labs anymore. Every student will have a device. These labs here can be turned into classrooms. Yeah?
Well, that's good. I just want them to really understand that, you know, it creates more room in a lot of, you know, if Lisa Peterson's second graders can have a lab in their classroom, that's ultimately going to give us more space. And, you know, when Mike goes out and does the assessments and testing, and they can do that in their classrooms, ultimately, that's freeing up tech dollars because we don't need to put it towards labs anymore.
And the greatest resource, which is time.
Right.
And the transition to labs.
Time, absolutely.
Wait time if stuff goes down, so.
There are no major anticipated internet network or server changes for at least the next three years or if not longer. The next major staff refresh should be in the 2017, 2018 school year. Major wireless upgrades should be planned for during 2019, 2020. At the latest, it may make sense, it may depend on the customer record license, we know we should run around 7,000 starting at next year's schedule. Here's a brief recap on the one devices we have in place now and future. Elementary still has the iPads. Middle school will implement Chromebooks instead of the Dell Bennys. The current Dell Bennys will be pushed up to the high school, and high school will continue to use our Dell Bennys.
Why are they using so many different iPads, Chromebooks, Dell Bennys?
Oh, that question's perfect.
My idea going into this is one of the good students, it's been several, one of the good students exposed through different platforms, to major platforms, Chromebooks, Windows, and iPads. If we use one platform all across, they graduate, they use Windows, that'll make a difference. This way, at least they're familiar with it.
Yep.
All right, we have a great infrastructure, elaborate devices, power, teachers using technology in their classrooms. Currently, Ann Davidson is using, Liz Davidson is using multiple platforms and devices in her classroom to improve student management and learn. She uses these websites here. Quizlet for vocabulary, Hattie, discussion platforms, Dray and Rush for learning, studying, flashcards, and School G, which will be one of the major ones we're using for going forward. She's able to share lesson plans, collaborate with students, and assign, and have assignments for them. John Forbes' speech has completely gone paperless, and his lanterns have gone completely online with the publications. No papers. He's also using Google Docs, voiceovers in the classroom as well. Chris Sampson, all his fifth grade students have access to the internet at school, bridging the gaps, bringing web resources right into the individual and community basis. We no longer have to schedule time in labs, use programs such as, we use programs such as Study Alice, inspiration, Accelerator Theater, and Star for testing. Students have instant access to School G, which allows the ability to review post-computer assignments, quizzes, and test and study. We use a wide variety of app reviewing, take quizzes, test, NearPod and Coop. Spelling has gone paperless, they use spelling city. Woodcock and Sampson have moved to a virtual agenda called My Homework that allows teachers to post assignments online. It's a teacher portal, students, they sync the S D portal, and their agenda shows up right in the iPad. Once they have synced, they can view and permission without being in their access app.
Just a one note about that I'd like to mention is that fifth grade, the whole fifth grade has actually decided to go paperless with their agenda next year, so we actually didn't even order them for next school year. So, the kids will do all of their assignment management either through School G or this My Homework app that they seem to like, which is also a free app, so.
That's fifth grade here? Fifth grade?
Fifth grade, yep.
There are numerous of other apps out there that have been using literacy, math, science, and are free, and have really shown to be beneficial in their classrooms. Matthew Drucker is using tablets to run our green notes. They are open source computers that students can design and program to do almost anything. I don't know what you guys doing on what Apple's doing and Tesla and what they're using computers to tell a machine what to do. That's exactly what he's doing in his classroom. In terms of day-to-day work, the tablets and School G platform might bring students the ability to stay better organized, able to take ownership for their assignments when they're asked. Going forward, our focus will be technology integration. I will be working with staff development and curriculum to ensure that we are training staff, enlightening students, and supporting their technical needs. A major piece of undergrad technology in a classroom will be School G. This is straight from the School G website. Everything students, faculty, and parent need in one easy-to-use platform. Teach, learn, communicate, and collaborate anytime on any device. Staff development, per Liz Tombeck. We are providing professional development and best practices with tier and tier-one strategies to increase student achievement as measured in an increase in math, MCA math, reading, and science test scores as determined by each building, upper unit, professional learning, R and B. We are providing at least eight hours of training during the 14th, 15th school year on hardware, internet technology, which will assist staff in technology integration. Staff have been working on School G during one-hour tech sessions on two workshop days. Goal was supported, was to support each teacher in having at least one course ready to go live by fall of 2015. All high school and middle school teachers were given support and setting up a course, creating inspections of courses, uploading files, links, assignments, and creating inspections. We feel confident that all middle school and high school staff will have what they need to go live. Our focus here in the high school and middle school will be School G, and this will be a great way to integrate technology in the classroom. The elementary is a little different. Their focus is more of their devices and what they can do with the apps. Also, I've asked Mr. Keith to say a few things about curriculum, let me get to have a look.
Yep, we had our curriculum meeting today as well, and it's important, if you want to go up a couple of graphics, Ramos, to that, those concentric circles. It's really important for us to realize that curriculum is evolving in a way that the technology is not a separate component anymore. And so, as you look at choices in our English Language Arts vendor, or how we're going to supplement tech or science, it's no longer the question of, you know, do you need laptops to use this, or can we get this on an iPad? That's just assumed now in curriculum. So, curriculum is the what we're teaching, it's the standards, and the technology is going to be a lot of the how we're going to get there. And so, the two are not separate anymore. And so, I know Enrique and I, we meet at least once a week to troubleshoot ideas about a teacher who could use tech to do a better job with the teaching. Or how do I supplement an activity, you know, how can I make it more 21st century learning skills? That's a big part of what we have moving forward. As a curriculum guy, working with Enrique as the tech, the line between the two doesn't exist anymore. It really just blends itself into really kind of the same, the same focus in education.
In closing, we have all the pieces in place for successful integration. We have a great infrastructure, we have great teachers, we have a great head committee in curriculum, we have a great head committee on staff development, and now it's just a matter of following through and executing our goals. That's all I have.
If, this is more toward Derek, because as I've said so many times, it's all over me. But are all of the teachers at the elementary level buying into the initiative? And if not, when?
They are. I would say, you know, at the beginning of the year, not so much. It was a little bit too much, too fast. But the fact that the fourth and fifth grade teams have really ran with it, including the second grade team who is pretty close to one-to-one at this point. But, you know, with, with the help of our tech sections after school, our one-hour staff development sessions that we've dedicated to technology, I feel, I think a lot of teachers feel a lot more comfortable and ready to move forward. We're still working on the School G piece, you know, that's still a big aspect of this. But it certainly, you know, at the, at the middle school, high school level, it's certainly something that is essential because of the fact that they have so many different teachers, that you need to have one place to gather everything. When you're at, at an elementary, School G is important, but it's not necessarily the thing that has to be in place first, because they have the same teacher all day long for the most part. So, yeah, I, I think we're feeling a lot better than we were at the beginning of the year, so. I would say by the end of this year, we're, we're ready to go with the next two grade levels.
But does, what does, does the word integration, what does that mean to me as, as a parent or grandparent? Is that, is that putting apps on, or is that, I don't know what it is?
Well, it can mean a lot of different things to a lot of people. To me, and I think if you were to ask any of the staff, I think it's, it's really about teaching kids in a way that allows them to grab a hold of their own learning. And really, teaching has changed in that teachers don't stand in front of the room and deliver all of the content any longer. They, they are more in the role of facilitating their learning. And ultimately, you know, our goal in education right now is to get kids to want to learn more. We, we are provided, Camp Falls is providing them with an opportunity and devices and ways to, to find that information. Now, we have to harness that, and we have to facilitate it in a way that is beneficial to our kids. You know, there's, there's a, there's a learning curve. There's, you know, I'm not going to say that it's easy, because, you know, teachers would be lying if they said it was easy to just flip the switch and all of a sudden be a 21st century teacher. But on the other hand, you know, I commend our staff for, for grabbing hold of it, because the kids are there. Our kids are 21st century learners whether we know it or not, and whether we embrace it. They're there, and they're ready to learn with technology. So, you know, for you as a, as a parent or a grandparent, you know, it's about embracing that learning, you know, letting them, encouraging them to explore things that they're interested in. But on the other hand, still managing it, because, you know, it's still new to the kids, and especially at the elementary level, it's not, we still have to teach them rules and expectations with classes, because the internet can be a scary place, but it can also be a powerful learning tool.
As we, as we move forward on this, and we're jumping in with both feet as a district, and, and we lose some of our staff, now we just lost somebody last, whenever, a tech person. So, what do we do to replace that person while moving forward? Do we, do we lose a little bit in that conversation when we, when we lose a tech person?
Your hiring, there's someone on the consent agenda tonight to fill in some of those holes that we know we're going to have. Can we get to that later in the meeting?
Yeah, and, and that support is necessary. The nice thing about our tech department right now is that we have the groundwork laid, having an infrastructure, and I know a lot of the board members remember this conversation a couple of years ago, or even last year, about how frustrating it can be to try and implement technology and have it not work. We're not at that point anymore, and we're, we're in a good spot. Now, it's just a matter of fostering the, the staff development with, with the staff, and, you know, I think our staff development team has done a fantastic job of just embracing that, but not going too fast. You know, one of the things that we implemented for our, our one-hour staff development sessions is an unconference format, kind of an ed camp, where the teachers come in, we gather in a, in the media center, and then we just pick what do we want to learn about? More so, what do we need to learn about to better ourselves? And the staff just go off, and, and we have all these great conversations happening throughout the building about things that, that pertain to them, their skill level, and their needs within their classrooms, and learning, you know, for it. But for staff development to recognize those needs and to provide that, that structure is, is an important step in the right direction. I, I think we're, we're absolutely in a good spot. But that's not to say there aren't, there aren't going to be some hiccups, and there aren't going to be some, you know, kids that, you know, need to be re-taught expectations. But that's what Tim and I and Mike are, are there for. So, I think there's a lot of fantastic things, as Enrique highlighted up there, that, that was only about four or five teachers, and you could ask any one of them out there that's using it, and they'll give you a, a whole nother slide full of.
Integration.
Great integration that's happening. It's fun for me, and those of you, I might as well say now, if you want to follow me on Twitter, it's DerekBall20. But it's, it's, I try and get as much of that information out as possible, and then, you know, a lot of the staff are on, on Twitter as well, and their job is to tell our story. You know, we don't want people going and telling all the negatives. It's our job as educators and principals to, to tell all the positives, and that's what Twitter's all about for us right now, so. Good questions, though.
Again, I don't mind yelling.
Anything else, Enrique?
Yeah, I think I might have made sure I was upgraded. We're just, I mean, we just installed what we needed to make sure I'm pretty good. Just a couple of years.
We're leasing.
Those are all the least.
So, I generally would be done with the lease, my mom, the upgrade, and get them out.
The other aspect of that, Rob, is that, you know, the outdated ones that we replaced, the Cisco ones that we replaced last year.
Right.
They weren't that old either, because technology is upgrading so quickly that it's more of, I think, a recognition from here and saying, listen, in five years, you're going to need to look at upgrading that because of just the amount of accessibility being pushed through the channels, that we need to be able to harness that.
Okay. Go forward, Brian, it's devices, they're not compatible, they're not compatible with the devices.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I know the board has asked, you know, a couple different times to kind of have an update, and Enrique did a nice job of letting you know what's going on in the district, and we'll try to do that quarterly so that we know, and the grandparents and parents in the room know what's, what's going on, so try to keep that up.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to public forum, does anyone have any issues that they would like to address the board on concerning board and community issues? Okay. Finance report. Mr. Davison?
Cash flow sheet, and as we talked about, this is the abbreviated version. We went through the full version a week or so ago in the finance committee. So, this is just the cash flow worksheet. At the top, you'll see the cash balance in the check income right now, about 1.8 million. And this kind of shows through here until we get through the end of April. In my office, I have through the fiscal year, we do stay at a positive cash balance, not having to do any aid anticipation borrowing for this fiscal year, which is good. Important to know that the cash balance does not equal fund balance. I would do a little better in cash than in fund. And as I revise the budget for the March 9th meeting, that number will come a little bit clearer. Won't be all tied up until we get through the audit in mid-October, early November for this fiscal year, but we'll get a little bit closer to where we'll actually finish off the fiscal year at. All right, so I presented the full part in the finance committee, so if there's maybe a finance committee member that had some of the, there wasn't really anything too exciting out of that, I'll try to keep that out so we can kind of push through this part in the board meeting a little quickly. But if you do have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you may have.
Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the finance report.
Motion by Kurt. Can you hear a second? Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. We have no old business showing. Under new business, the consent agenda, these are usually enacted into one motion and are considered routine. If for any reason we need to pull out a specific issue, we can certainly do that, create it on its own. Do you have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve. Motion by Josh. Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Carry. Approval of the expenditures, attachment F. Just take a moment to review those. Any questions? Not look for a motion to approve. Where'd that come from?
Yep.
Can't hear in here, can we?
I can't hear. Here you are.
This thing's humming too, so.
Second, did I get a second? Thank you. Seconded by Josh. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a mobility incentive leave.
Yep, exactly. You probably have not heard of this, but there is a, there's several different leads in the teacher agreement, and one of them is called the mobility leave. It allows our educators to take a year and maybe two to maybe experience a different career, give them a break from teaching. It can be for a lot of different reasons. In this case, Chris Ajemming is requesting a one-year. She may come back and ask for a second, and we've talked about that. I would encourage her to do, take one year at a time, just gives Derek some time to hire her for her position and things like that, but she is requesting one-year leave for mobility.
Without, without reviewing that mobility leave, are we required to go longer than a year?
You are not. If you want to do a year and not renew it for next year, you would have everybody to do that. Part of the things that Chris and I talked about, we're keeping up in staff development, she's agreed to come to the trainings. What we don't want is a, things are moving so fast. Example, tonight was with technology. We don't want things to start moving so fast that we now get a teacher back that has maybe missed out on some of those training opportunities. She's an excellent educator, and she will take it upon herself to attend as many of those as she can. She also plans on subbing in our district when she is not working at her, her new career for, for next year. So, we kind of, it's someone we know, it's someone we trust in our classrooms. I think this is a win-win for everybody.
This guarantees her an elementary teaching position when she comes back?
That is correct. You've read the contract, yeah. It doesn't guarantee their specific position back. That can sometimes be sketchy or, you know, confusing to people, but it certainly guarantees them a job back in that building in their licensure area. That is correct.
When do they have to notify the district that they would be coming back?
It's in her letter. I didn't bring that. I didn't bring that tonight. It's very sufficient time. Do you remember offhand, was it March 1st or April 1st?
Yep, it's one of those two, March. It'll probably be this time next year. She'll have to let us know if she's-
We try to keep it in line with retirements and things like that, so we can start looking at our staffing, because right now, a lot of schools, even if they're laying off teachers, we want to be able to get those teachers as quickly as possible if she's taking another year. So it's either March or April 1st. I can't remember what was in her letter.
How does that work for us hiring a new teacher then, knowing that in a year they may be left? Simply because the teacher who left is coming back? Does that make it tougher? Is that disclosed?
In this position, you know, they come in as a non-tenured. Even if they were tenured in another district, they have to work here for a year. So that gives us options at the end, either they could continue on contract if Derek finds that he just really loves this new hire and that's a position that he, or a person that he wants to keep. If there's positions open, they can move around just like anyone else. We're pretty open about that when we hire. They aren't hired for that specific position, nor is anyone. They can always get moved around. So we're real open about that. We have a lot of openings kind of coming up here now, so there's gonna be a lot of movement around.
I'll make a motion. I'll say. Brendan has made a motion to approve the mobility incentive leave, and Jerry seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is Kerry. Discussion of round two reduction. Beth, as you're loading up here. Okay, it's on your, it's one of the questions I was gonna ask.
It's that integration stuff. There are samples, if you guys want the slideshow, we did print out some small, yeah, they are. So if anyone wants these, Laurie was nice enough to make copies for us. Do you want to pass those around? Am I connected, Enrique? All right, well, I'm sorry my back is to some of you. It's that time of year again. We went through round one. There's been a lot of discussion, certainly about round two. I know that everyone has certainly given me their input. I just kind of want to take a step back and talk about the process. We have a lot of people that are involved in what we call the breakfast club. We don't really eat breakfast. It's just really early in the morning, so it's a good name for us. But this is really important to me. I think all teachers, all administrators, all different areas of our school need to have input. So when we sit down at the table, everyone is bringing ideas, and when we talk about those ideas, then that information is disseminated back to the groups. And this is really important. As much as this can be hard on the staff, it helps with morale a little bit, that they feel like they know what's going on, and that's really important to do. So I want to give kudos to this group for spending early, early mornings together. I then want to take you a step back, too. The finance committee has met a couple different times. We also had a board retreat. One thing I know about this board is they take very seriously our finances and the situation that we're in. They will do just about anything to save positions if we can, and we've done a nice job with that the four years that I've been here. But we talked about three different things. We talked about balancing our budget. When we work at our homes and our checkbooks at home, we want to make sure things balance. What's coming in is matching what's going out. If we wanted to do that, that would be that bottom one down there. The 8.21% would give us a balanced budget. But that would mean we would have to cut $628,000. Now, we all know that's gonna be really hard to do. So the board started talking a little bit more about that. They felt a little more comfortable with 400 in reductions. That gives us a 6.05 fund balance. Auditors want us anywhere from 9 to 16. That's kind of that safe zone where we want schools to be. This makes people like Josh and I a little nervous, but we understand the reasoning why they want to be at 400. That makes sense to us. Same way we want to go, zero reductions. We're not cutting anything. We're not doing anything. Even though we lost 20 seniors, we don't want to make any changes. We did actually also talk about that, too, because we've got a lot of great things going on. If we were to do that, we'd be at 2.46 fund balance, and what we would have in our bank account is $291,000. That would not make payroll, would it?
No.
No, it would not even make payroll. So we felt good. We started, we went in the middle, we decided with 400. That was not an easy decision to get to either, by the way. So first round, we went in, and we talked about the ALC moving to the high school, we have transportation to Red Wing, if you're not aware of it. Goodhue County District is building a new facility. It's gonna allow our schools to transport to one site instead of West Dade, Riverside, and Red Wing. Secretaries are gonna reduce by half an hour. We've kind of gone back and forth in this. We really listened to what the secretary said, too, and we really think that this is gonna be possible to do. Snow removal in-house, team teaching of humanities, which doesn't mean we're cutting humanities in any way at all. Right now, there's currently two teachers in the classroom. We are now gonna rotate back and forth, and the teachers will share that position. They're still getting the same class, just by one teacher every other day. And then we are gonna move the 504 coordinator. We're gonna realign those duties. Okay, those were voted on and approved. We did take a couple things off, but this is what the board has already agreed to, $143,000. Then we started looking at revenue. Got a couple emails from people in the community and a couple board members saying, hey, let's not forget about revenue. Let's see what we can do in that area. I want you to know what we currently do charge for. I think this is important. We obviously charge for sports, but a lot of people don't realize, if your kid's in speech and basketball, you're paying for both at the same time. These are the fees we do currently charge. We don't always have a play, we don't always have a musical, but when we do, those are the fees. Weightlifting is the only one that was at 65. Okay, those are our currents. What the administration did and what the breakfast club did, we started looking at things that we thought we could charge for. If these are a paid coach, and I've got that all broke down, what those coaches make or advisors make, we thought it was important that they go ahead and pay a fee to be a part of that. It doesn't really make sense to pay an advisor if the child doesn't pay to participate. So we're looking at FFA, BPA, which is our business group, Interact, which has a lot of students involved in it, Steel Drums, I know everyone's heard the Steel Drums play, so it's kind of a Cannon Falls unique thing. We really like that. Jazz choir, jazz band, and middle school jazz bands. Those bottom three stipends are actually quite high. We actually did look at making those $125, but we thought, starting with the half-rate fee, what we don't want to do is have kids not participate. We still want them to be out for things. This still will count for the cap. We have a family cap. So if your kid's involved in everything, you're gonna hit that cap anyway. We're not looking at changing that cap.
What is your cap?
Current cap is?
650.
650, beautiful. Okay, we decided that pep band, student council, annual staff, lantern, the newspaper, National Honor Society, robotics, and there was one other one on there we took off because it was kind of confusing to people, was flag patrol. They all get a stipend, but we did not think that that is right. If a fifth grader's out there holding a flag for us, they shouldn't pay to be a part of that organization. If we use current participations, is that funny, Lisa? Catch you, time to pay $5, you're over there. If we use current participation, we found $14,000 using this. You'll see this later in your agenda. You'll be voting on it next board meeting, not tonight. I want you to think about this. I want you to look through this. We think this is a really, really good option.
See, going back to like the sports themselves in the previous days?
Sure.
They're all 125, and then why wait to the thing out of all of them as 65 versus 125?
Because they don't do it every day. There's kids that truthfully use it as a strength coaching. If our head coach has some of his athletes go down, they may go very sporadically through the season. The coaches use that more as a strength training type program. We certainly can look at it. I think it would hurt, because we want it to go along with in athletics.
We don't, we don't transport either.
Yeah. There's no, there's no huge-
Makes sense.
We can, we can look at it. I just wanted to look at new revenue for you. And weightlifting, in addition to that, will be charged, there's gonna be a summer program that'll be a little bit different if they want to use our facility in the summer. That'll be another way to generate some revenue. Okay? Another revenue source, we're gonna add 10 cents onto those cookies. I know that sounds crazy that you can get to that number. We used last year's just your à la carte, not your lunches. We're gonna talk about that later. Federal government runs what we charge for our lunches. Not much we can do. We can alter our à la carte items, found $6,400 just by adding a dime to à la carte items. And remember, parents do have the choice to kind of block that or not.
Is that good or bad with all that à la carte? Let's be honest here. That's a lot, that's a lot of notice.
Okay, I'm gonna run through round two considerations. If you want to jot down your questions, we're gonna come back to the same exact screen, and I thought at the end, we could kind of talk about them, versus getting off into separate conversations. Is that okay with the board members, if we do it that way? Okay. So we are going to be looking at these items, and we'll go through each of them individually. Before we get into that, though, I want to make sure that everyone realizes we looked at absolutely everything. Construction this year had extremely low numbers. We don't know why. We build a house every year. This house means a lot to this community and the housing initiative program and things that we've got going on. Even with the low numbers, if we cancel this program, we lose our CTE levy, that is career and technical education levy money. We cannot afford to lose this money. It's about $37,000, depends on which category you look at it. $20,000, we had a donation. Because this guy came up on the chopping block, I went to a housing initiative meeting, and they said, you know what? We don't want to make any money on the house. We want to support this program. We want to do everything we can to keep this house going. We're gonna give you $20,000, because that was kind of that missing number. You know, we're like, if we lose the CTE and the Perkins money and all of those things, we were still short about 20. The housing initiative really came through, and if you know any of the members on that committee, please, please give them a big thank you. Perkins grant funding, it isn't a ton of money, but again, this is funding towards our business teacher, our ag teacher, and our construction-type classes. We have to have, these grants are in place to protect these programs. It virtually, like us, is making it almost impossible to cut this program. The other thing that the housing initiative, and I have the documentation here if anyone wants to see it, over the course of 12 years, they built the 11 homes. Nine of them are still in the original home. They are the original owners that bought those homes. They all have children, except one that is now the second owner, does not have kids, and then has brought in $116,000 in tax money to the school district. So again, a great program that I'm glad we're able to keep. I also got news that Red Wing ALC students are going to come over for this class. So when we drive that bus over to that building I was just explaining to you, they're gonna hop on our bus, ride back, help us build the house, and then Red Wing ALC will come over and pick up those kids. Now, Mr. Hodges is sitting there going, oh, because it can be a scheduling thing, but we're gonna make it work. So we're gonna have kids, we're gonna get the house done. The other thing that we looked at is .5 art. There's gonna be teachers who are gonna see the registration and go, whoa, why didn't they talk about art? We did talk about, we talked about it a lot, but we need that staffing at the ALC. He cannot run an ALC without staffing. Some people seem to think that we can just magically make great things happen at an ALC without teachers. He needs staffing. .2 business, again, ITV, isn't that beautiful room that we have over there? We've got kids taking Chinese this year. We've got kids taking just all kinds of great business classes and things like that. We are short, our teachers are short .2. We're gonna move that over. We can sell those classes back to Kenyon Wanamango, Goodhue, Zambroda Mazapa. Very excited. This is the start of money coming into our district. We invested in it, now we're gonna pay it back. This also keeps our teachers full-time, and that's our ultimate goal. So we did look at everything. First, first one on the docket is? Windows. Enrique's goes here. I can go back. Why is it popping out? It's not, I can start over. There it goes. I'll just start over, guys. All right, first one up is a 1.0 elementary. Now, I'm gonna have Mr. Bell get into this. We, earlier in the fall, if you remember correctly, went through guidelines, and I think the board members have it, guidelines for classrooms. We did this because all schools have started to, we gotta have parameters. We can't just every spring go, or, you know, when we're making reductions, go ta-da, we're just gonna throw this number here and there. We worked really hard on these parameters, and Mr. Bell has handed that out. I'm gonna have him go ahead and explain the 1.0 elementary.
Yeah, you know, there's not a ton to explain, really. You know, but, you know, based on these guidelines that, you know, we adopted in November, the board adopted in November, you know, we've got a group of kids coming through the elementary that is small, small for four sections. It works out well in K1, 2, for sure. You know, having under 20 kids in a class is ideal. Would I love to have that all the way through K5? I betcha. But when we're cutting $400,000, there's, there's only so much you can do. The thing to note, though, is that the reason it's listed as 1.0 elementary teacher is really based on numbers. You know, right now, the bubble group, the non, I guess the bubble group in a sense of the smallness of it, is in third grade currently, and next year going into fourth grade, it's, it's a classroom that's, that's 78 kids and-
Derek, when I was principal, this happened, it happens to you, too, down there. Six kids move in. What are you gonna do?
Well, we, board, everybody knows, we've, we've ran into this every year since I've been here. I've added a teacher right before workshop week. The thing, the thing about this whole situation is, you know, looking at managing our budget for next year and having to find $400,000 in cuts, right now, I'm just looking at the lowest grade level per, per student enrollment, and that's fourth grade. It will be fourth grade next year. But again, you know, if, if tomorrow or this week, we get five kids that enroll in fourth grade, that's no longer the small bubble group. Now, the conversation switches to a different grade level, and-
So you might be moving teachers around if you did that?
Absolutely. So nobody is being targeted here, and I don't want you to think that, you know, but if we need to find $400,000 in cuts, one of, I would say, there is a 1.0 elementary that we can cut at this point. But again, if we enroll kids, obviously we do what we did in the past, and we add teachers back, because every kid we bring in is, is quite a bit of revenue, so.
It's 6,200, so even if we get four kids, that's half a teacher. You know, it can fluctuate. It can. Mr. Hod, and again, I know you guys have questions on that. If we could just hold everything to the end, I think we'll get through it all and then ask all the questions at once. Mr. Hodges, would you, I know it's an easy explanation, but the .8 Spanish?
Yeah, currently, the high school has two teachers licensed in Spanish. One of the teachers spends part of her day managing 504 plans with our students, and the other .8 of her job is teaching Spanish. Next year, an example is, we had 90 students who registered for Spanish 1 for this school year. For next school year, we had 36 students who registered for Spanish 1. And other than a small bump in Spanish 2, I'm down across the board in Spanish. So one thing that this Spanish reduction would likely look like, and one program cut that will be made in Spanish, we currently offer a trimester-long Spanish exploratory course, course for eighth grade. We'd be looking at eliminating that course and supplementing it with, with something different. So probably looking at STEM, some type of technology, science, technology, engineering, math type of program.
Okay. All right, next, knowledge bowl. You can see on your sheets there, we have three kids enrolled. This is kind of an older-type program. We now have math masters and some of these other really great programs that have kind of taken over from this. We talked to the advisor a little bit, it's, she's fine with it. Wrestling coach, tennis coach, and uniformed prees. Mr. Winchell, would you mind going through that?
So knowledgeable, like you said, we have three people registered, look back a couple years, we had four registered the previous year, three the year before that, and that $4,000 there is the coach's salary, transportation, and then entry fees and stuff like that. Like Beth said, we talked to the advisor, and she said to see a goal, which she completely understands, if that's where we're gonna go. She said it's hard to get kids out to do this stuff. So she completely understands. to get kids out to do this stuff. So, she completely understands. Wrestling, we currently play three coaches, and a varsity coach, a varsity assistant or JV coach, and then a junior high coach. I've got 21, excuse me, 21 kids out this year. I can easily schedule contests for them, and really, right now, they don't ever, all three levels don't participate on the same night. So, I can, I can schedule junior high on a different day so the JV coach could take the junior high kids on those days.
If, if Josh wants a C squad coach, his group can fundraise and pay for that. If Matt Rats decided, we still want that extra coach, would we allow that to happen?
Yes. Yeah, a few years ago, if you remember, you eliminated all C squad coaches. So, if there's any C squad coaches in this, in any program here, it's fundraising, it's money that comes from the school. And these sports up here, they don't have a C squad, so they weren't really affected by it. So, despite their low numbers, they, you know, they kept their whole coaching staff. Same with wrest, or same with tennis, 26, 26 registered this year, and I talked to...
They took three coaches as well?
Three coaches as well. Yep, a junior high, a JV, and then a varsity coach. Same as wrestling, I can schedule those junior high contests on a different day. And actually, we do that quite a bit right now too, because a lot of those junior high kids play JV as well. Uniform freeze, again, a few years ago, you stretched that uniform rotation out. It used to be three sports per year. Now, we're down to two, and this would obviously hold off for one year and save that about $5,000, depending on the sport.
Josh, did you want to give the good news now or later?
Regarding the uniform freeze, the CFYAA is going to donate that $5,000 back. So, we don't really have to go on the uniform freeze, the coaches, we can still stay on the rotation. I did talk to Jake a little bit today, and we discussed if there was any other, you know, critical issues in the athletics at CFYAA that 5,000 we use for. Said at this time, there's nothing, you know, no coaches have approached him for equipment or anything like that. So, after talking to Jake and, you know, giving him that news, he's like, hey, that's, that's great, and we'd like to thank the CFYAA for that.
Absolutely, and thanks for being that connection. I think this is a great example of our community coming together when this stuff happens. We do come together and we do make solutions. We've done the best that we can. I don't want to put that as a revenue source. I think that confuses things. It is a reduction out of our budget, so we're going to leave it as that, but there's some good news that kind of came with that. The construction supply budget is $6,000. Talked to Mark Walter, who builds the house, and they're going to, they've got new tools. They're going to go a year without the, the supply budget. Remember that building the house is, is paid for by the Housing Initiative. The supplies that they might include are, are special things that students may need or, you know, protective gear and all that. We just bought all of that. The Ed Foundation really stepped up last year. Kelly helped me out. Was it last year? We did? I believe it was last year. They paid $5,000 in protective gear and some extra tools. So, either it was the year before or last year, but the Ed Foundation has really come forward and helped us out in that area. And then the last retiree benefits. This was really eye-opening to me. Lori is the one that brought this forward. As people continue to work longer and longer, and we have less teachers in that, that pool, we have an interesting thing happening this year where teachers are actually dropping off, not dropping, that sounds really bad. They're, they're not taking the benefits. You know, they're already hitting their age 65. So, we were really surprised by that number, but that equaled $49,600. I had Lori check it like five times, and that is a correct number. So, we were happy to see that. So, we're back to the list of considerations. I will do my best to answer any questions you have. I know that there's some really tough ones on here. Reductions are never easy by any means, but remember, you're not voting tonight. Tonight is just to gather information. We want you to go out and talk to the community and get as much information as you can. So, I'll take any questions you have.
My guess would be that some people are here for the 1.0. And, you know, this is a board discussion item, so I think we should keep it board. They'll have a, a week before the, that, if they want to get on the agenda or speak to the public forum, they certainly won't have that opportunity next week.
I just really want to make that clear, and I think Mr. Bell did a nice job of saying that. We don't know for sure what grade it's going to be. Right now, it's obvious, but I have been elementary principal, you've been, every year it changes. Lori works in July with me, and we're like, every family that comes in and enrolls, every time, it's always the same grade level, just getting more and more students. You'll probably get my infamous email that comes out August 1, we need to hire a teacher. But I think we'd better prepare for it not to happen rather than it to happen. We can always hire later if we need to. So, I would imagine that you've got a large group here that, you know, will be talking to you this week about that.
Information in a small town seems to run rampant well ahead of time. If we were to assume this was part of the, the middle elementary school group, what, what are our ratios and how do they correspond with ratios in like HBL schools? That's kind of the way we always measure ourselves, I guess.
Right. So, I did check around with some other schools in the area. You know, really there, it, so much depends. In our, in a, in, in other schools our size, you're looking at right around 23, 24 kids in a, in a fourth grade class. You know, two of them said that they usually, they've had 28 before. A couple have said next year they will have 28 in a, in fourth grade. And again, it's only fourth grade. I'm not talking to any other grade level. You know, I, I know that, that Zambroda last year had 30 in a class, and, and they decided to, instead of add a teacher, they added a professional. But really, it's the 23, 24 range is, is most of the other schools around us, so...
In, in making this cut, it would put us approximately where, based on the numbers we have now, per grade?
Where we have now in the rest of elementary, you mean?
No, he's, the third grade going to fourth grade, what would their classes look like? It's 28, isn't it?
No, it would be 26.
26.
78 kids total, as of right now. And that's actually, the only grade level, oh no, I guess it has changed a bit. You know, there's been some movement, unfortunately lost, but if you kids in that grade level this school year, because they started out at, I don't know, I guess they started at, at 79, but then we get added a few and then dropped a few, so... Three, four sections, obviously, you do math, it'd be 19, 19, 20, and 20.
And three of us, how much, 20?
26.
26. It's 28.
How do you feel that educational process will get served when they're adding, in theory, if we would keep everything the same, according to you, it's like 19 to 1, and now we're discussing 26 to 1. How does that impact a kid when there's seven more in the class?
Research will tell you it doesn't. In fact, there's a lot of research that says it doesn't. It's all based on, on teachers. But the, the impact that it has essentially is, is the workload of a teacher, because it's still six or seven more bodies in the classroom. It's that many more report cards, seven more grading periods, it's that many more calls to parents, it's that many more conferences. So, there is more work, but, you know, it's, academically, you know, our teachers are, are going to do whatever it takes to, to make sure those kids are educated. And again, you know, I, I can show you research, you know, down in my office that, that says there isn't a strong correlation between high class sizes and student achievement, and conversely, low class sizes to high achievement. Would we like to have low class sizes? Yeah, but reality is, can we afford it?
What is the average class size for the other grades then?
Well, our, our class size is, is extremely low, can't...
Oh, I know.
Well, I can tell you, we've got, right now, we're looking at 19 and a half, 21.75, 21, 19 and a half, and 21 and a half.
Well, 26, it still falls within the guidelines the board had voted on in November, was it? Which is 24 to 28?
I do think that would be good data. If you could give them the current, if you could get that to them before the next meeting, I think that would be good. I think the average was 21.7, but that was beginning of the school year, so it wasn't, and that's taking in kindergarten. We always like, I mean, so those averages aren't always good either.
Do you think the one-to-one would, would help teachers, or depending on how they're integrated so far, it, it could be a detriment if there's more kids? Or don't you think the initiative plays?
I think it's definitely a benefit to have a year under their belt, you know, whether you look at fourth or fifth grade. But I think it would, it would absolutely help, you know, having a one-to-one device, you know, essentially makes quite a few things more efficient. But there's still, you know, there's still professional development that needs to be done, and we're working towards, you know, that facilitation of learning. But yeah, I think, I think it would help.
Derek, do you know what, does that go off of, is it the Tennessee Star Research? Tennessee Star Research out there? I think I may have it wrong. They talked about the 18 to 23 for kindergarten, and I thought that was to third grade, but that was just one, one research out there, one research that was performed, and I don't know if they, they consider that the pinnacle that people are looking at. But I know that in that one, they were saying up to third grade, they, they were talking up to 23. And I'm sure it varies from study to study, but I'm just wondering if anyone's familiar with that, if that's something that's, anyone's heard of. It's, it's out there, and it just looked like that was up to third grade was 23 students. So, I'm, I don't know. That's, that's a tough one. I, it's, when we get to that level in that minute, I know we agreed on the, up to 28 for third and fourth grade, but 26, 28 seems kind of high for me.
We're only talking 26 here.
26, yeah.
When, when my kids were in wrestling years ago, it was pretty standard to have 26 in class, 28 in class.
Yeah.
That's not uncommon.
Right. I, I don't agree it's not uncommon, but I just wonder if it's to the best.
I, I will say, I mean, I, and I guess, I'm not afraid to say, I, I would love to have, you know, four sections of everything, and so I don't want you to get a mixed message here. But I, I also understand the reality of the situation that we're in, and I don't want to be part of the school district that, that has to, you know, be in trouble by the federal government because we are in operating debt. So, I also wanted, you know, to be known that a lot of school district, when, when, when implementing a one-to-one initiative, they raise class sizes because of, of what they believe technology will do to, to student learning. There's, there's, I, I know a lot of districts that, that we've looked at have, have maybe, maybe had a drop originally, that, that transition period, but essentially their, their scores are at or well above what they were at before. So, I, this, this, this cut is one of those that, I, I hope it doesn't affect the learning. I don't believe that it really will because I know the staff that we have. But again, you know, you, you guys are the ones that are managing the budget, so...
Thank you for that.
Okay, so this is my last slide. You have directed us to find 400,000. Between round one and round two, we are at 338,000. That would be including everything that's listed tonight. You did remove a few things, a couple things on round one, but the difference is 61,000. We are out of ideas. We are at that point. So, keep that in mind. I thought I would bring in the current legislative discussion. I know everyone likes to say, well, if we get two, well, that's going to be good. Okay, I've estimated about what 2% would mean for our district. But keep in mind, the real number we need to reduce to balance things out is $628,000. The reason why our, our senators and people are really pushing the 2% is they're trying to decrease everybody's number. Everyone's around 600. The front page of the Eagle this week is Red Wing's cutting 1.6 million. I mean, we're, we're in a tough situation here, and I, I can appreciate that we're going to maybe be getting that 2%. I feel really good. I talked to Senator Dahl, it was part of a conversation on Sunday night with a lot of superintendents. It was kind of a phone Twitter conversation kind of thing, and I think we're going to end up with the two. With that said, we have a difference of 61, and that's including everything from tonight. That's including the revenue, that's including everything. The balance budget is 628. Say we get the 2%, you can obviously see where we're going to be at. So, if you have any ideas, the staff has brought forward great ideas. We've looked at all of them. Admin team, I would say we have met eight, 10 times, be an exaggeration on this. Feels like even more. There are hours and hours of going through absolutely everything. I called Bob and said, maybe we should share a superintendent. I mean, we're looking at everything. I don't know what else to do.
Could we possibly, and this is just a suggestion, don't, just something to look at, I would, I would really like to see, and this might be more for you, Jake, I would like to know what our total budget is for sports in the year, what we pay coaches, head coaches, or whatever it is for football, dance. It, it's interesting to me, and, and this is wonderful, we talked about just very briefly, we're going to have to cut uniforms. Next thing we know, before we even went into discussion, CFYAA is going to pay 5,000. And it's like, we didn't even talk about it, and it's like, boy, if we could get that from the booster clubs or something to drive sports, I think that'd be better than looking at a teacher at this point. I'm, I'm sure it may come down to something along, but we've got something in sports here where I believe we're at about 240, maybe more than that a year for sports. And if we could cut 5% somehow, some way or another, looking at that, how much, how many coaches are there?
I do want to remind you though, and this is where it gets complicated. You'll learn this because you're a negotiator this year. On the back of the teacher's contract is called Schedule C. We cannot change coaches' salaries until we go into negotiations.
I'm just wondering how many coaches we need out there for, for one sport? And I, I don't know.
Wait, okay, but just, okay, I'll get that information for you. I actually have it. We have it already. We decided not to bring it tonight. It's all ready to go. I can, I'll send it tonight after the meeting, but just...
Because what I'm looking at is just a little creative financing that way. What I'm looking at is, whatever a booster club makes, it has to go through the district. They have to put everything through the district. It can pay for coaches' salaries if they so choose, which would be a bad idea. It's, it's very humbling, and it's also very overwhelming. Like, for instance, the dance team was able to go out and raise $12,000 in one night for, for fundraising, and it's wonderful. I'm not, dance is a great sport. However, can we look at that and say, look, can you contribute that to your sports a little bit differently than what it is now? A lot of money going out there for sports and donations, and we're looking at teachers versus what can we do in the sporting area? I'm not saying that we can't...
It would be incorrect to think that we did not look at sports. We...
Yeah, okay, I understand, I understand that, but I'm just looking at it differently. I think there's creative ways of doing that, and we, I don't know if we've done that, and I'm not saying there's any way of doing it, but without looking into it some way, you know, when it used to be one booster club, then we could appropriate the funds any way the district wanted to. Now, you know, booster clubs for football goes to booster club, goes to football, booster clubs for dance goes to dance. Is there a way we can manage it differently? That's all I'm asking, you know?
So, we have, we have dance boosters and football boosters and band boosters. Are those the three boosters we have?
Yeah, Matt Rats for, Matt Rats for...
You know, just like with the CFYAA, they said, we'll give $5,000 for uniforms. Well, why can't we just let that go for a year and use that 5,000 differently if they so choose to spend, spend it differently? I mean, thank you very much. I understand that. It's wonderful. But we automatically said, okay, you're going to get your, your outfits. What's more important? Outfits or teachers? That's what I'm saying.
If you, if you use that logic though, all of these are autonomous groups that, that other than charging facility use, we really can't dip into their bank accounts.
You're talking to booster clubs?
Yes.
Right, we can only go out and ask and just say, look, we're going to, we're going to spend money on coaches. We need some help here. You know, as a district, yeah, they, it's their right to go ahead and generate funds. They can also recommend what they'd like to use it for. But it's also something, if you strike up the conversation and say, hey, look, this year's, you know, we're looking at cuts, would you be willing to spend some of this on coaching or, or whatever?
You know, my, the legislative discussion, you know, we've had years when we've been thinking it was going to be a one and a half or two and a half, and it ended up zero. You know, I, I don't, I don't think we should be in discussion about the legislative end of things, because I'm not sure where that's going to go, and they change so often. It just, it all depends who gets the last word in there. So, nice to see. It would be wonderful to have, but, you know, we usually treat it as zero and go... to have, but, you know, we usually treat it as zero and hope we get something.
Well, let me know what legislation, what legislation we do.
We are at the Capitol, I just sent you that email, was it March third? We should have some really strong numbers on March third, I'll be at the Capitol all day that day, I would think that day we'd have a pretty solid number.
We had some discussion about debate, what changed, what changed?
Oh, I'm so glad you brought that up. We aren't exactly sure, we originally had three down, Robin takes numbers from Jake, and then the students pay Stephanie, the cashier, for whatever reason, Mr. Fogarty, great coach, but hadn't kind of encouraged those kids to go pay their fees, and they had been participating and things like that, after we got every one's fees in and everyone that was participating, we did have ten students in the debate, so, we did not put that on, thank you for bringing that up, I apologize for that.
The musical, I know a couple of years ago we had some discussion on it, it seems to be a very costly endeavor for us.
We moved it over to community ed because we don't have money for it.
Well, not the musical.
Oh, the play.
String play, yeah. The musical is very expensive, you pay basically three salaries out of it, we run that in the fall.
And we run it every year?
We have, yeah.
And there is, do we have enthusiasm to run it every year?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good group.
I just, I want to note on the coach thing, and I, we can definitely revisit that, if the average coach makes two thousand dollars, let's pretend it's even three thousand dollars, and we need to get fifty if we're not going to do a teacher, which I am a hundred percent agreement on, just mathematically, you've cut, I mean, are we going to be able to cut that many programs and coaches?
Well, yeah, and I, I know that, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but every year, every organization has allocated so much money a year, correct? If you had twenty-five hundred one year, you're, it's in the budget for the following year.
You're talking about your supply budget?
Supply budget.
You cut that by six, six percent less, do you?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just get an idea what that all looks like and just see if there's anything, you know, that we can do with, with that as well. I, I don't know if it's something that is possible, but let's take a good hard look at that a little bit more and just see, because I know, we don't like to look at sports, we're afraid to look at sports because it, people love sports, and I agree, I get it, but you know what, I, we need to look at sports maybe a little bit more than what we have been, I think.
Would you consider that sixty-one we're short on?
I, I don't know.
Are you talking this in place of an educator or?
No, I, before, I would say before we come back with the next rounds, that we have some of the information available and say, "Hey, what are we really looking at, what do we have set aside every year for all this stuff?"
I, I'll send that tonight, I actually have all that, it's already on there, so that'll be easy.
Yeah.
Lori, can you bring it over to me?
Jerry, you have a comment?
Yeah, if we're going to go back down that road, and you want to reevaluate all that stuff, then I'm going to suggest, recommend bringing that half band cut back, three-three tie and, I'm just going to put it up there.
This is something that we haven't looked at in a long time, I think, my, my, my wonder is if we can cut, if there, I don't know how much is there, maybe, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand a year, I'm not sure, but four years ago was like two hundred and thirty, I think, something like that, but if we take five percent across the board, you know, what's that give us? You know, it doesn't, some may say it's a lot, but you know, there's, there's, there's businesses out there that run leaner than that, you know.
But five percent of what, I guess enough?
I don't know yet, Jerry, I don't know, and that's what I'd like to know, I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to know how much money every year goes across for twenty-five hundred dollars for this program, what's that all add to, up to, and to say, "We're taking five percent across the board," you know, I don't know, but that's what we're looking at.
You know, we could do is just take all supply budgets, there's no supply, we're going to transport, we're going to pay coaches, zero in supply budgets, you're still talking, you know, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to look at it.
Okay, sounds good, I'll send that one, that's good, good thinking, thank you.
You know, when we, I'm sorry.
Was going to ask, done the Spanish cut, would that just be moving your own responsibilities or would that be staff touch?
We don't have the students to, we kind of struggled to fill that last year, that's why we gave that point to five oh four, as Mr. Hodges said, that we just don't have any numbers, so we're not really moving anyone around, it's just no enrollment in it.
It's kind of difficult to make a comment on things, but the breakfast club, that's phase one of conversation about where we're going to go, right? You, you sit in the room and you do some brainstorming about where we're going to go, where can you make some recommendations? It seems like a nice cross-section of, is the, is it driven by admin or is it driven by, everybody's got one twelfth of the conversation going?
It feels really cooperative, I mean, everyone can answer, Amy, maybe you could answer, you're on the committee, I, I think it's just a joint effort by a lot of people that really care about what we're doing, so.
I think it's a good cross-section of staff, but I also think there's a lot of listening that goes on, and I will tell you that, for me personally, to know where in the budget, and I'll use Tim as an example, who has basically talked about picking two dollars out of this budget and twenty dollars out of this budget and three hundred dollars out of this budget in order to find money to get whatever, a tablet or something like that, or, we don't know those kinds of things. I do know staff feel we're very lean, we're using everybody as about as efficiently and effectively as we possibly can, and a lot of the cuts that have been proposed are driven by numbers, which again, we don't, I don't know that, I don't know who signs up for what, and so then when that comes to the table, it's discussed and talked about.
The, the fund balance conversation, we've, we've talked about this in work sessions in the past and such, ideally the state of Minnesota says ten to eighteen percent or whatever that has, has to be, or they would like to see, but those are no longer real numbers to a, to a school district, there's very few that have sixteen, we were actually nearing that point at one point in time before we decided that we needed to spend that fund balance down to do things that we have done in a while in a work session. So, the fact that we're going underneath the prescribed amount should raise concerns, but not necessarily alarm bells, because that's kind of what goes on in public education right now. It would not be out of the ordinary for us to be at six percent in relative terms to other districts, I think, would that, would that be fair to say?
Yes and no, if you don't make the cut or if you don't do anything to help stave some of that off, then you're going down into your four, three, and two percent, and that's not going to get us through one payroll, through one month of payroll, actually, one pay period. So, yes and no, I think you have to watch the trend. We were at seventeen percent three years ago, which ours would be great with, that gives us two full months of expenditures if something real terrible were to happen. With school districts, we do have the ability to borrow based on anticipation, so livable is probably between that six and twelve. Once you start getting down five, four, you see that slope going towards SOD, it's not a, a right track for us to be on. I think that's really what we're looking at, we look at whether you cut six hundred and twenty-eight to balance it out, and if we set eight percent, you cut four hundred thousand, and we stay at six percent, which is probably pretty livable, or if we do nothing near that, two and a half percent, and that's not a good place for a district to be at.
Is that six percent with, without what we're going to get from the legislative legislature, it's a zero, I'm just like, Joe?
At Red Now, you'd be at three hundred and thirty, so with that seventy thousand, you're at your four hundred, so we'd be at six percent. And that's if legislating were to hit with that number.
Even if they give us two percent, but just, it isn't, don't think of it as moving two percent to your fund balance, we don't increase by two percent. Every student is worth sixty-two hundred dollars, you get two percent of that, so you get sixty-two dollars more per kid that time.
Do we have any other projected retirements this year?
Yep, we've got three letters in on my, two letters in on my desk right now, they came in today, it was too late to put them on, it, it won't change anything, I, I don't want to confuse you with retirements, we still pay out their 403B and, you know, some of those severance things that kind of go along with teachers, so ultimately rehiring one at a lower rate, you know, it, it often balances out, right Lori? I mean, it, it very much is a wash, so, yeah, I do, I do have two letters on my, my desk today, so, lots of, lots of new faces at the elementary, that's for sure.
Hey, Beth, how are we doing with Wasfido School and how would that factor in, and it's a one-time fix, but-
Yeah, that's, that's, you're right, it is, but you know, when you're swimming, you're swimming, right? We have had some amazing showings, actually, he thinks he'll have a purchase agreement possibly this week, or at least an offer of some kind, I don't, he had no idea what that offer would look like, they came out for the ninth time now, and have, have looked at the building again and again and again, so I think that's a really good sign, but again, I don't know a number, but you're right, we are getting closer in selling that, that would be, that would be good, take the insurance off that, I mean, just the monthly savings would be, would be good too.
Okay, any, any other questions? Good conversation. Item E, discussion of suggested fee increases starting in twenty fifteen.
We kind of talked about that in the presentation, if that's okay?
That's all right with me. Discussion of possible referendums and timeframe.
In your packets, you have, Lori, do I have one of those? Do I? I don't think I do. I'm missing one. We continue to talk about, I do have one, I'm sorry, we continue to talk about referendums, it's time that we really, really have a serious talk about it, we need to make a decision if we're going for a referendum this fall. What I have attached here is our referendum history, I had Lori look this up, just for the audience, in two thousand, we passed a referendum, those are four, we passed an operating referendum to maintain current programs and stop the borrowing of cash. In two thousand seven, that was the big year, we passed the building referendum. It's been very difficult since to kind of make sure that the community understands the difference between a building referendum and an operating referendum. So in two thousand ten, we had a failed referendum, we were at five hundred and we were going to try to go for eight fifty. Two thousand eleven was my first year as superintendent, we came in, we were going to go for five hundred, and we were going to ask for nine fifty because we were that behind, that also failed, but unfortunately only failed by a hundred and twenty-three votes. In two thousand thirteen, you remember that the board did a board approved three hundred that needed no voter approve, voter election, we also received LOR, which is four hundred and twenty-four dollars, so we're currently at seven twenty-four. Every school that touches our borders, other than Good Hugh, is at fourteen hundred dollars, so to put that in perspective, we're running on half the income that other students, or other school districts are getting for their students. It is with one hundred percent of my heart and soul, we have to go for a referendum this fall, we, we really, really need to take this seriously, I have given you the information from Ailer's on here, the packages that they'll put together for us, MSBA, I talked to the gentleman that did that survey, it is very clear to us that our twenty-year-old people that live in our community didn't vote, now whether that survey's right or wrong, that's what he's saying, we can get more information, I think we can run a good referendum, I think people see, when we're making cuts like this, we're talking about cutting an elementary teacher, you know, we're, we're talking about taking supply budgets away from already, you know, tiny budgets and those kinds of things, I think we're at that point. New research shows that big years are your more successful years, the twenty-somethings, I'll try to explain it, how he explained it, they aren't a generation of voting regularly, but they will go out and vote for a president, so if that's the group that we need to vote, they will vote the year that the president is being elected, so that would be two years out. I still think we need to go this year, you never want to fail a referendum three years in a row, voters will get very used to saying no, and, and that's not a good thing either. It ultimately is up to, to the board, you won't make it pass this year, so you'll have to go the year of the presidential election, but my recommendation would be to go this fall as well.
What the finance committee met, and that, a couple of board members, some admin as, as well as the community, what was, what was the conversation there?
Well, it was pretty much unanimous when you say, Josh, that everyone on the board felt this, this, this fall would be the time to go up for a referendum, Josh can help me out, but after this year, we go another year after this year without anything out there, and we start to head into statutory operating that and not-
I think we are.
What's that?
I think we are.
We are, okay.
We are, yeah, that would be more accurate.
And that's something to be considered too, I mean, like, we had all mentioned, we're looking at cutting programs that we don't want to cut it, at this point anymore, and that's been taken out, it really has, and we're there, so Josh, I-
No, I'm okay. I agree with you on that side.
You know, we get, we're faced with the dilemma of, of low per pupil funding, and one of the tasks that we'd love to see the legislature take care of, somehow to, to make that playing field more even, when there's three hundred and thirty schools or whatever it happens to be, and our number is in the mid-three hundreds or low-three hundreds, that, that should tell the community that we're operating pretty well on the shoestring as well as we possibly can, and if our, if our referendum numbers are seven twenty-four, and the average is much higher than that, you know, another indicator that we're doing as well as we possibly can both as an educational process and as well as the board, we're actually faced with this as being something we need to get done as soon as possible, and we need to convey that to the community, and that's why I, I pushed our auditors over the last couple of audit sessions, every year we get, we get reviewed about how we spend our money, and it's empirical data, it doesn't have anything to do with any other areas except what is, what do you spend on your educational process for students? And two years ago, our auditor said, quite frankly, "You're the lowest one of all the schools that we audit," and he came back with like data this year. So, you know, sometimes people can question our individual decisions, and that's, you know, I guess that's their right, but if you look at the overall picture and what the district has done with the money, the capital that they have to spend, I think we do nothing short of a great job with people's dollars. And it isn't just something that's occurred over the last five years, ten years, it's our history here, it's our absolute history. At one time, when I was first on the board, I think our, our educator numbers, our teacher numbers were well, you know, they might have been as high as one-ten, now we're down to eighty. And so, as our student population has lessened, and that isn't, that isn't just Cannon Falls, that's what's happening, so have our expenses, and we've done a nice job with tearing them down. Now, you know, like Kurt discussed, we, we have to look at every single thing we do, and, you know, sports is kind of a gur for some, but we've looked at it over the years, but, you know, we look at sports, when you look at speech, when you look at some of these others, our kids that participate in that do significantly better than our kids that just participate in the scholastic day and leave. I wouldn't say it's as important as our educational process, because that's, that's not true, but it's an integral part of it. You start cutting some programs and start cutting some events, and you start, you start losing kids to something that isn't educational, just because, gee, we can go somewhere else and participate when this is taken away from us. So there's really a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but I agree with finance, and I certainly agree with Beth and everyone else, we, we need to look at a referendum and get our timetable begun.
Okay. Lori, will you put that on the next agenda as a vote item? So just come back, ready to vote on that item. Just to follow up, I want to make sure I'm hearing everyone correctly and to follow up the conversation, you would like Jake to check with the boosters, band, football, and dance, to see if they're willing to contribute anything, and-
Sure, and just the, the budget.
Jake, you'll do that, and then you would like the, all the numbers for all the sports?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
Or sports and extra curriculum?
Sports and extra curriculum, isn't that the document that you, we already have?
Yeah, I'll open mine.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, reports, board members, I think we covered the finance, do you have anything else to, to add to it? Any other board members' reports?
Were you going to talk, would you mind talking about it, the curriculum, Derek?
Yeah, absolutely, so, at the curriculum committee today, we talked about three things in particular, the first is our current adoption of a new literacy vendor or a new literacy curriculum, and the process of narrowing it down, we have two vendors that- We have two vendors that we're still looking at, National Geographic and then Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt. Our literacy curriculum committee, about eight, ten members strong, are going to do a site visit to Stillwater Area Schools very soon, possibly even this week, if not next week. We're going to look at one school, if not possibly two, and just look at Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt in, in action and what it looks like in a building that's been running it for a while so we can get that kind of an idea of how that would look in our buildings. The second thing we talked about was student enrollment, the numbers that even Tim kind of alluded to this evening. With student registrations being done, we have preliminary ideas of what our students are taking as elective courses and then what, you know, levels of the core subjects that you're taking, like what maths, what English classes are taking. And from that, that obviously dictates some of the staffing suggestions we made to you guys tonight as well. And the third thing at the Curriculum Committee tonight, we talked a little bit about our online options for students learning next year. We currently have students doing online school or maybe possibly some credit recovery through online courses. We're looking at seeing if Good Hugh County Education District would support that endeavor with a company like Fuel Ed and what that would mean for us if Good Hugh County Education District adopted that, what kind of course offerings then we could provide to students if we also joined, if we were under that umbrella. So, do you want to add anything to that one?
No.
Brenda, if you don't, they'll be voting on it at your next meeting. So vote yes for Thule.
Please.
Sorry, I shouldn't tell you to vote.
Facility says a meeting tomorrow morning.
Brenda? Oh, I attended the Education Foundation meeting this week or last week, and they are planning for their, doing fundraising for their auction coming up in April.
April twenty-fifth?
The Cannon Golf Club, so they're looking for donations or volunteers. And they also approved donating five thousand dollars to Be the People for their trip to Washington and also to help sponsor the Amity Intern. They donated three thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. It was bringing a Spanish teacher over who had taught twenty-five to thirty hours a week to assist our Spanish teacher. They're doing great things as always.
What was that date again?
April twenty, April twenty-fifth.
Cannon Golf Club.
Cannon Golf Club, yes.
Good time. Anyone else? Any other board members? Matt?
What did you got, Ford? So, congrats to the boys varsity basketball for moving on into the playoffs after a one-point nail-biting game against Over Yoda. They play again Tuesday at the Rochester Civic Center against Byron. Girls varsity basketball, having begun their playoff portion as of the season as well. Wrestling moves on to state with the, the team competing Wednesday and two individuals on Thursday at the Exile Energy Center. Talked to Coach Dudley on that. The Cannon Falls speech team finished first at the Farmington Invitational this past Saturday. That is five straight tournaments that the CF team has received first. This week is FFA Dress Up Week. Today was Camo Day, and tomorrow is John Deere, which is the color green versus International Harvester, where the tractors, the battle. The annual Humanities Dinner fundraiser is this Friday at six-ten in the atrium, put on by the humanities students who are attending the two thousand sixteen Europe trip. Students have already sold tickets to their guests, and they will serve their guests at that dinner. And at the dinner, there's a traditional Italian dinner with Italian music and also a silent auction that goes through, so it's a great fundraiser. On March third, the American Red Cross will be having an all-day blood drive in the auditorium. It is said that a pint of blood can save three lives, and the NHS will be helping with people in and out of the auditorium. There will be no school next Friday, March sixth, for staff development.
Are you on the speech team?
Yeah.
How many participants do we have on the speech team?
A lot, upwards of, what, eighty-two, yeah. We've had no ball, but yeah, upwards, yeah, eighty.
Very good numbers.
Very good numbers. Okay, upcoming meetings. Our next regular board meeting is March ninth. We'll consider the school calendar, we'll discuss the retirement requests, the revised fourteen, fifteen, and our round two considerations. Anyone else have anything before we close? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
No question.
Thank you, Brenda. Second by John. Further discussion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Close. That is Terry. You are adjourned. Thank you.